It took some time, but we were able to accomplish that task and move the Americor into another location. By doing that, we were able to afford the Birchfield group, which may I say, at that time is not as robust as it is today. And it's a compliment first and foremost to all of you. You have brought this Birchfield group to an incredible community outreach, if you will. Yes, you should give your hand. I have a couple applause. You have accomplished more than anyone ever has for the Birchfield Nature and Art Center. And knowing that, we as a board knew that we had an opportunity, and I'm not speaking of this board, I'm just speaking of prior boards leading up to this. We wanted to expand the police department. The opportunity was to take the supervisor's office and the finance department and legal department and move it down to the Birchfield. And for those ladies that were a part of the Birchfield at the time, you remember that happening. That being said, we always said, in the end, when we find a home for these departments, which it ended up being here. This community center fulfilled so many issues that the town had faced. Losing the Kiwanis Building, losing the Birchfield. We were able to accommodate all the offices, a gymnasium, a community room. Because this room, just a little history. The town of West Seneca was supposed to build a courthouse on top of a hill back in the 60s when they built Town Hall. But they never did that. But the town board and zoning board and planning board never should have been holding their meetings there. But they were kind of grandfathered in. So the Justice Department was very pleased with us that we were able to move those meetings out of the courtroom. So that being said, I just want to just trail back a little farther. So once we moved the finance office and the legal department and HR department over to the schools, because one of the Birchfield parties informed us that there were some structural issues to the building. They were very concerned about the windows and some of the hardware were coming off. So we did that inspection. And after that happened, we immediately removed personnel and everyone else from that building until we found that it would be safe. But after we did the investigation, and I'm just giving you a quick background on it. After we investigated the damage to the building, it was incumbent upon this board to make sure that we went to those responsible and hold them responsible for what had happened to the architect or architecture and the landscaper, the engineer, and all the things that happened in 2001. It really put a huge burden, not just on the town, but on the Birchfield community. Because all of their programming was going to be shut down because they didn't have a plan. But they refused to say, "We're not gonna not. We're gonna figure this out." So they said, "We're gonna get a trailer." So they got a trailer. And then we helped them with storage, and we opened up the Mets House. And then we found out after all the surveying was done that we could open up the classroom. But I really believe, and this is just my opinion, and that's why I asked for this meeting, because I want your opinion and I want you to know that we value that. That we need to continue the programming there. We need to turn the Birchfield Nature and Art Center back to the Birchfield and let them run it and own it and make it what it should be and could be and has been. So John Fens, our prior town attorney, he's going to come here. We have a report here. I'm sure a lot of you have already seen it. It's been on the website and the report. Now if anybody wants one of these, we'll make these available to you so you can review the report that the town board was handed. So what I'm gonna do, because I don't know how much longer he's going to be. And there's no reason for us not asking for your input here. I think what we'll start doing, and if John comes in, then we'll just stop and then he can give more information. But I would like, if you wanted to, we didn't get a sign up sheet or anything. But I think, the weather being what it is, I think we have an opportunity here to have one by one, you can come up and... What? Okay. He said John's on his face, so I can't see 20 feet, so... So I can't. So if Mr. Fens is here, we're gonna let him get himself together and have him do a little presentation, if you will. Oh, and here he comes. Man of the hour. John Fens, thank you so much for coming this evening. So before we start, John, you get yourself together. I'd like us all to stand with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we also have our town attorney, Tina Hawthorne, councilman Gene Hart, Karen from Senator Gallivan's office, thank you for that, and give the senator our regards. John Fens, our past town attorney, who is still working on this project with us. Town clerk Jacqueline Felsor, councilman Bill Hanley, and supervisor Sheila Hagan. John Fens, it's your turn.
Do I have to hold it down while I talk? Nice accommodations you have here.
Only the best, Mr. Fens.
Alrighty, thank you everybody for coming tonight. I'm very pleased that there's so many people here this evening. Linda, how you doing? It's been so long. So the context of this conversation is about the future of the building. And to talk about the future of the building, we also have to address the past. The building was designed, constructed, 1999, 2000, finally put into service in 2001. It served many purposes over the years. Town offices, Americor offices. It was housed by the Birchfield Nature and Art Center, friends of the Birchfield Nature and Art Center. But as time wore on, we noticed problems with the building. Specifically, in January 2017, everything came to a head. There were members of the town board that were in there. Their attention was called to buckling windows. And when we had our buildings and grounds guys go in, they noted, and as well as our engineering firm, they noted that those issues were not anything that were merely cosmetic, that they were issues that signaled larger problems with the building. At that time, our engineering firm recommended that we consult with a forensic architect to review the plans, to review the construction. They went in with geothermal units that would take pictures of the walls and based upon the readings of the temperatures in the walls, they were able to determine that there may be other issues going on with the building. Ultimately, a report was delivered to the town board in April of 2017 that set forth what the forensic architect determined those issues to be. They fell into two categories, one being design issues, the other being construction issues. What they noted with the building was that it was constructed much like a family residence would be constructed. And we know that building to be a commercially used building. So that was something that we noted at the time. The town board, in their responsibilities, they're charged with authority of caretaking all of the buildings in the town, the town's assets. They saw it would be appropriate to close the building at the time to determine when it could be suitable or safe for safer use by the public. We have not had the blessing to open up the entire building due to these issues. Also, the board, in an effort to protect the interests of the taxpayers, consulted with outside counsel who specializes in construction and design defect litigation. It's Ernst Strom Dresdahl out of Rochester. John Dresdahl and Matthew Holmes from that law firm are the preeminent attorneys in New York State with respect to that. We knew that we had a steep uphill climb with respect to litigation, the issue being statutes of limitation. I'm gonna speak briefly about the litigation. And typically, you'll hear this in a lot of contexts, that we won't go into litigation because it's still ongoing. And that's one thing that I want to let the board know and the public know, that that should be something we won't get into tonight. Specifically, we should be addressing what the future ideas for the building are. So in 2018, we instituted litigation against the design professionals with the building. The town had an agreement with Nussbaumer and Clark. And Nussbaumer enlisted the services of an architect and another engineering firm to help with the design. Our forensic architect, in his report, noted that there were significant issues from day one with the way that the drawings were put together. And that's the basis of our claim is, the drawings and the building as designed are the cause for the failure, are the cause for the property damage that the building is experiencing. The town sued those three design professionals. The lawsuit was met with three motions to dismiss. We weren't surprised because it was on the basis of the statute of limitations. Our learned counsel, they offered an argument based upon the civil practice law and rules that specifically deals with design defects. That says, when there is a design defect, you have X amount of time, 10 years after you discover the property damage from the design defect, to institute the lawsuit. We did it in that time period. The judge, the opposing counsel, offered motions to dismiss on behalf of their clients. There was a hearing held, and I believe, December or November of 2018. And the judge ruled from the bench that the lawsuits would be dismissed. He didn't clarify the reasons for the dismissal, but he addressed several reasons or addressed several questions of our counsel in that. And we are now appealing that ruling because we believe that the judge should have considered our pleading as we stated the facts, not adding any other information. That's currently going, while we're trying to settle the record right now, that's just something, it's lawyer extracurricular, as I like to call it, where we're trying to decide what we're arguing about so we can go and argue about it. So that's happening right now. And then after we settle the record, the appeals will be filed with the fourth appellate department in Rochester, and we'll go from there. There will be a panel, I believe, of five judges in Rochester that will hear the matter. We don't have a date for it yet, but that should be coming sometime in the next six to nine months. So in the meantime, the town board, listening to the Friends of the Birchfield Nature and Art Center and interested parties at town board meetings, found it prudent to have a conversation because we understand and the board understands that the timing of this building should not rest with litigation. Never rely on a lawyer's timeline to get something done. So and that's where the conversation is gonna be focused today, is what is it that the public wants to see with the building? And, you know, listening to past comments about other projects, the board feels it prudent to listen to the people and see what they have to say about where to go next.
Thank you, counselor. Well done. Melissa. Again, I want to thank the Friends of the Birchfield for coming tonight. This is a compliment to all these people here tonight. We feel the same way you do. We wanna get something rolling here. It would be great to get some pricing in there, some contractors in there to give us some ideas and some pricing. But the more important thing this evening is, is to let you speak. And that's why we're having this meeting. So Sharon, if you wanna go first, that would be wonderful.
It may be.
No, it'll be wonderful.
Last week, I watched on TV as Mark Hollenkarz gave the Botanical Gardens $2.5 million for expansion. The next day, I read in the paper, a quote of his that I feel is very relevant to this building. He said, "That's what we do in government. We support our public needs. One of the best ways of doing that is supporting arts and cultural institutions that enrich the body and enrich mind." And that's what the Friends of the Birchfield Nature and Art Center have been attempting to do since 2010. I think there are probably some of you in the audience tonight who have never been in that building. Or if you have been, it's been in and out. Because most people, once they've come for something, come back again. So I want to just give you a starting overview of the kinds of things that have gone on there. Our board knows what we've done. We send them yearly reports, we send them reports of all of our meetings, and so forth. For the past nine years, we have had programs that met a lot of cultural needs of the community. In our gallery, which is no longer available, we had nine to 10 exhibits every year of many different kinds of art. Not only paintings, photographs. We had fiber arts and wood carving, Native American arts, historical arts. All types of things that people could come and see for nothing. We did not charge the artists to hang them. And if you ask any artist nowadays, most galleries charge to hang. We had many speakers who came in and did talks on historical type things. Our wonderful historian, Jim Pace, has done a number of programs there. We've had speakers come in and talk about Charles Birchfield, who, by the way, I had somebody a couple of months ago say, "Well, who was he? Was he a former town supervisor?" So there are people who don't even know that Charles Birchfield was a renowned artist who has had, he's no longer with us, paintings hanging in many of the world, the best world galleries. There is the Birchfield Penny Art Gallery downtown, which occasionally people mix up with us. And that's all right, because we know we're better. But he lived on Clinton Street, right across from what is now the park. And this town, back when they were designing the park and the building, chose to make a tribute to this world-renowned artist by naming the park in honor of Charles Birchfield. In our building, when the gallery was open, we were attempting to make an area that paid tribute to him, that let people know more about who this man was. In addition, the Native Americans come every year, do a program on a treaty that was signed along Buffalo Creek. They have done classes within the building on wood burning and beading and cornhusk dolls and a number of things. We've had exhibits of autistic children, of young children doing artwork. I noticed the wonderful paintings out here in the hallway. It's great to see young people doing that. In addition to that, we have a lot of other kinds of programs that we put on as the year goes along. At no charge to the town, by the way. All of the programs that the Friends of the Birchfield run are paid for through our own efforts. We raise the funds for them. The town is very generous in allowing us to use the building and taking care of the utilities and maintenance. But all of the programs that are held in that building are held through the efforts of our group in raising money. So just to give you a little overview. If you wanna know more, I have last year's end of the year report. I have sheets of our upcoming activities. Even though we don't have the gallery, we have a full schedule of activities for the whole year. Very few of which will cost anybody anything. And again, this is a town of as many blue collar and lower income people as higher income. We wanna meet their needs. The children, we have, last week, or the end of February, we had a February fun day. If you got the sun last week, the whole back page showed pictures of our activities that were going on. No charge if the grandparents wanted to take the kids to Chuck E. Cheese or Bounce Magic. It costs. We often run those types of programs. We have a beach class coming up, which, because of the size of the room, we've had reservations. It's just about filled, and it isn't for another three weeks. People enjoy doing things other than sitting there looking at their screens. So again, when you're thinking about what should happen to this building, we hope you'll consider the fact that, yes, it may cost you a few cents in the end, a night out for dinner at some point in time over the next 10 years. But the culture that comes out of that building, that nobody is paying for other than the donations and the things that we put together, is well worth what that building, the repair of that building would cost.
And if someone else wants to come up and speak, feel free to come on up.
I'm probably gonna start to cry. I apologize. My name's Cindy Camala. For over 30 years, I worked at Roswell Park. I was always stationed in the area. Oh, oh, alright. Okay. For about 30 years or so, I worked at Roswell Park as a lab technician, a pharmacy technician. Many of you are familiar with that, working in a hospital situation. It was, you know, I loved being with the patients. I helped with their medications and such. And I also volunteered while I was working there. I helped with a lot of things. When I was deciding on retirement, I was looking around for places that I could volunteer. Because I didn't want a job anymore, but I wanted to be able to follow my heart. And I looked around at different places, at the zoo, I volunteer there, and a couple other places. But I came to visit the Birchfield building. And Mark Kara was there at the time, and he welcomed me in. And he was so gracious, showed me around the building, told me about the property, and said, "Yes, they could use a volunteer there. You could always use volunteers." It was, you know, this was during his time. But the moment I walked into that building, it felt welcoming. It felt like when you go into a friend's home. And to have that taken away from us was so sad. There were so many wonderful things that have happened there. People that have shown their artwork. I've gotten to talk to the kids that do all the photography. When we have our photography contest, I love speaking with those people. And they bring these things alive, and you can share your experiences or how you view the art, and see what they were trying to tell you. And when you tell them what you saw with your eyes, it's enlightening to them as well. I've heard wonderful speakers there. We've had movie nights. You can come in and you can learn from the crafters that come there, the spinners, the quilters. There were many groups that came and met there. And I got to become the Hawaiian fairy godmother. Or someone having an accident, I'm sorry. But during our Enchanted Forest, inside the building, there was air conditioning. And I would sit in there and read stories to the children. And they would have a chance, and their parents could cool down in there as well. And many people have just been so grateful for that building. I was talking to a few people today. I volunteer over at Queen of Heaven as a lunchroom lady. And one of the teachers there said, "Oh," she says, "I showed some of my artwork there, too." And many people, their hearts really enjoyed that building. What we learned from the Native Americans that came there, it just, it gave me goosebumps to realize the commemoration that takes place. It's not a celebration, it's a commemoration. And they taught us. They taught us a lot. They taught us their prayers. They prayed for the land, they prayed for our country, they prayed for our town. And I would just love to see the whole building back. We really love that building. Thank you very much.
Cindy has done a lot of things in that building, and she does them very well. She's a great story reader. Kids love her. Sometimes she comes in her jammies and reads to them. Other times, she's the Hawaiian fairy godmother, but she's great. Forgive me, everybody. I'm gonna have to read my statement. I just can't speak extemporaneously like these other talented people. But I wrote down what I need to say. "I have many times expressed my concern to this and previous town boards regarding budget issues. Continuing increases in the cost of living are enormous, and not one of us wants or can afford a tax increase." And we all know that. "The town owns the building that is in need of repair, and I would like to see it restored better than its original condition." "The fact that it was improperly designed and constructed is not the fault of this town board. But to remedy the problem is in your hands right now. The longer we wait, the higher the cost." "There are several questions that need to be addressed. One, can we get this building restored?" I think we can. "Can we do it in an affordable basis?" Am I speaking into the mic? Seems like it comes and goes. "Can we do it in affordable phases, deferring or eliminating some of the recommended changes? Can we find grants, donors, patrons, or other ways to fund the building restoration?" I think there are yeses to all of those questions. "I have not asked the question, 'Should we restore the building?'" And I'm glad to hear it sounds like you think you should. Because in my experience with the center since April of 2010, I have seen popular art exhibits, student programs, and public presentations in the building serving a broad segment of this community. As you have heard, these events should not be lost for want of a building that has already proven to exert so well. "I'm not a construction expert by a long shot. Although I did help to build my current home, and I know better than to put a wood sill plate, whether treated or untreated, below grade." What were they thinking? "The priority problem, according to the forensic architect, is the moisture damage, still wicking moisture up the studs, causing wall damage and advancing the structural damage. You can now see the weakening on the outside of the building. Again, the longer we wait to repair it, the more the cost." "A number of other problems were identified but called secondary by the forensic architect. If this were my building, and I did not have the resources to fix everything, I would start repairs to the foundation to prevent further damage in the overall structure. With that in mind, and knowing it is not wise to proceed without professional consultation, I would ask the town engineer and some of the buildings and grounds crew to pull off a little more of the interior walls to see if they can determine the extent of the damage. And unless some very extensive, formally undetected damage exists, repairs should begin immediately." I just think it's a no-brainer. This is me. "To lessen the cost of the required corrections, our experienced buildings and ground personnel could do the restoration." And again, this is me saying that. I don't know how much time they have to do it, but I think they're qualified. "They have made the Mets House secure and habitable for the Historical Society and have corrected some of the Americor bills in the past. They've also completed some of the better work in the north offices in the Birchfield building. If the buildings and grounds crew did the work with input from our town engineer and outside consultation and assistance if needed, I believe we could do the restoration for far less than has been quoted. Maybe not the total rebuild, everything, but I think we could get that building back in shape. And I think we have to do it right away before it deteriorates further." "I have suggestions that would need to be confirmed by the town engineer. But for example, what if the sill plates were placed on a properly laid or poured foundation and the studs replaced as needed? What if other essential adjustments were made, such as new insulation to bring the building up to code? What if attic storage is just banned? Leave the HVAC units where they are, or end put new ones outside the building or on the main floor. Leave the current units there. The attic floor could be reinforced as needed, probably less expensive than removing those things that are up there. Attic installation needs could be addressed, and vent movers replaced for the more appropriate size." Now, the only other thing I think you need, absolutely, is new siding installed on the building and the windows, those two windows might need total replacement. I don't know. If there's enough to put back in there. Anyway, from my reading of Mr. Pearl's report on the building, those are the main issues to be addressed. If the town board would make a commitment to restore this proven town asset and attraction, we could have it restored and back in use for the entire community. And if they make that commitment, I think funding could be found, either through grants, donations... Either through grants, donations, patrons, whatever. But you can't seek money until you have a commitment to it ahead of that. When the building was closed in January 2017, the gallery had to cancel eighteen scheduled artists. I believe Sharon said that. And removed access to popular intimate art gallery. People love that place. Many local artists had already requested use of the gallery in 2019. This would have been into the third year, which we're into now. So there, we were, had requests for three years in advance to use the gallery. There are numerous talented artists in West Seneca and more in the surrounding area. The Birchfield Building is a tribute to West Seneca and the legacy of the internationally renowned watercolors Charles Birchfield. No other town can claim such a legacy. It's ours. Up until the building was closed, West Seneca received guests from all over Western New York and the country who came to visit this building and its exhibit. Even outside the country, too, but that was prior. The Birchfield Building houses a group of volunteers worth, on average, more than an annual employee value of $75,000, not including benefits. These volunteers provide scheduling and materials for community and family activities in the building and park, usually for no charge, making them affordable to everyone. The Nature and Art Center with its gallery and park is also a known attraction to businesses and people interested in locating in this town. To not restore this town treasure as soon as possible will be a huge mistake, in my opinion. Thank you.
And I will, I agree with you about the heating system. Sorry, you're rolling. The heating system, in my opinion, too, just let's leave it up there, reinforce it, because we know the cost to open up that roof. The dormers are needed and need to be put in play. But we need to upgrade the HVAC. And I think we need to do that. And I think we should reach out to people like Danforth that have done a lot of work in town, and maybe they can donate that. I think we really have to pull together our resources and all the talented people in town and do one of those opportunities to make this happen. Long overdue. I do know this board did everything we could within our means because we knew we were gonna head to court on this to give you part of the Met's House and open up the classroom and get that storage unit. But that's not what's...
We thank you for that.
But that's not right. This shouldn't be happening to us in a building that's, you know, not even twenty years old. And but the opportunity for all your hard work, this is such a robust group of people. When I started, I mean, this is twenty times what it was. And it's incredible, the work you do. And my favorite was Mrs. Manzola, was that her name? She was a lovely lady, and she mothered ghosts. To see those children and you as fairies, and the way all the kids would gather all their equipment out in the forest to make those fairy houses. I mean, it was just buzzing with activity. So you all deserve that. I need to go on because I am just as sad as you are. Is there anyone further that would like to come up? Please do.
My name's Margaret Morano.
Margaret, you have to get a little closer.
My name's Margaret Morano. I'm a registered nurse, and I worked at the Buffalo Psychiatric Center. And also did occupational therapy with clients that had developmental disabilities. And the thing that they want to do, and so with the psychiatric pageant, is on-hand things that they create and make. And it makes them feel well and good about themselves. I volunteered for the twenty-first, I think it was, when we had all the children there. And they were just, they were so engrossed in making these silly little toys, I guess you would call them. And then the glue wasn't working, so I was a little frustrated with that. Anyway, it was so nice. I had, I have three children that, when I was, I moved out to the country in Perrysburg, and there was, I had these three little children. There was nothing for them to do, nothing. There were no activities, no enchanted forest, no playthings. What they do is they get into drugs, and that's what my oldest son did do. So when we moved into West Seneca thirty years ago now, it was like Wonderland. They saw McDonald's, they saw parks, they saw the pool. And it really makes quite a difference to your attitude about life and everything else you wanna do. But our heart and soul is in Birchfield. You can tell from the people that are here. And I've been involved about eight years, I don't know for sure. Maybe that's, who knows? But whatever, I wanna see, I mean, I'm willing to get hammers and nails myself, honestly, to do something to get it back together. So I think for children, and the enchanted forest and things like that are just amazing. How, I don't know, you just get such a nice feeling, so that's all I have to say.
Let's see, Jackie Almarola, come on up. Jackie played a major role, too.
And I still believe in the Birchfield Center. I think before we spend any more money, I think we need to have a clear idea of the mission and the vision of the center, and we need a plan for sustainability. Because clearly, the building will always need repairs. The building will always need upgrades. There will always be something that needs to be done. And although we have a very dedicated, talented group of volunteers, an organization needs more than that. And I think for the town to just decide to either put money in the building or knock it down without a plan for the organization to move forward and to have sustainability, so that after we're all dead and gone, the thing will still be open and will still be able to serve the children and adults of the community, it would be foolhardy to spend another penny.
Anyone further?
John, I know what you said about the litigation and talking about it. But I read Mr. Pearl's review that he gave to the board, submitted to the board. And when you read it, it seems like it was designed and built by an eighth-grade class at Bosse's. It's just unbelievable, the stuff that was wrong with it. So I'm hoping that the appeal goes through. But I'm thinking, even in his report, he said it has, there's a budget which he outlined, and then it goes to estimate, and then out to a bid finally. Can we move to the estimate? I don't know if it would cost and how much. To find out what it would cost actually to get it done, to re, not to knock it down and rebuild it, but to renovate it.
So with Mr. Pearl, he expressed some difficulty with it going out to bid for a couple of reasons. One, initially, we were speaking about it in terms of an insurance claim, whether our insurance carrier would cover it. That's not, if our insurance carrier is paying for it, we would go through a bid process. So that would be optimum at that point, because that would give the ability for the project to have flexibility. And that's specifically what you need with this, because you're repairing a building, and it's, he, I don't know if he came up with this metaphor, or I did. It's Jenga. You take a block from the bottom, you gotta put it on the top. Something's gonna shift one way or another, and the scope is gonna consistently change. So it would be a time and materials bid, most likely, which is very difficult for the town board to have a financial control over.
No, I understand, that's the bid part. But the step before the bid that he had there is the estimate part. And what I'm wondering is, can the board get a good estimate on what has to be done? And maybe determine, you know, some has to go out the contract to do it. But maybe there are some things that we can do in-house to lower the cost of it. If you could get a good number to come to the people with. I mean, like he put in nine hundred thousand, almost a million to renovate it, and then the million seven to knock it down and build another one. Instead of using those numbers, if we could get a little closer to what it actually might be. I put it out for big, because that might change, but just to let everybody know. Because, you know, nobody likes taxes, and let's just talk some firm numbers here. And then if we can do some of the work on it, all is better.
Anyone further?
I wanna make sure I'm heard, that's all. I'm losing my hearing, too, back there, so you can all hear me okay? Okay. I grew up in Gardenville, and I think that's such a great name for that area that I grew up in here in West Seneca. And then I found out that this guy, Charles Birchfield, lived in Gardenville, too. Of course, growing up in Gardenville in the sixties, we never heard of this guy. Had no idea there was a famous artist living right across the creek. So I moved away for thirty years, and I came back, and I heard about this event. I knew about the Birchfield Penny in West Seneca. And, I'm sorry, the Birchfield Penny in Buffalo. And when I heard there was a Birchfield, I, of course, confused the both of them, too, like you were saying earlier. Excuse me. So when I first volunteered, I was given the job because I was one of, like, the three men. Ninety women and three guys volunteering for this. And there was a guy named Rich Reimers, who said, come on, come on and join us. And I was up on a ladder hanging art, and that was my main job. I was always hanging art. And this, one time I was hanging art on this ladder, and this older guy came in. He was in his seventies, and he said he had come from, all the way from Minnesota. Because he'd heard, he'd always been a fan of Charles Birchfield. And he said that he had gone to the Birchfield Penny first. And then he'd heard that actually in the town where Birchfield had lived, there was a community organization, too. So he went out of his way to come from Buffalo out to West Seneca. I think he said he got lost trying to get there. And I said, well, you know, the house where he lived is right across the creek, too. And I told him how to get to the gazebo, and you can look at that blue house. And it's like, okay, I'm looking at the house now, what do I do, you know? But I went back up on the ladder, and the guy took off. And he came back maybe fifteen, twenty minutes later. And I had just learned that nobody got paid. The people who were volunteering were all volunteers. There had been directors, I guess, you know, Mark Kara, another fellow named Andrew. They had been directors who had been paid. But for the past ten or so years, nobody was getting paid to do this. And it just blew me away. I said, everything these people do, and nobody gets a stipend? Nothing? These people are doing it out of the goodness of their heart? Jesus! I had just learned that, and this guy came back, and I said, you know, nobody gets paid. And he reaches in his wallet, and he pulls out a ten-dollar bill, and he puts it into my hand, and he goes, well, here, put this to a good use. You know, and I just, I was blown away by that generosity, this fellow. I mean, he had come all the way from Minnesota, or Chicago, or wherever he came from. I can't remember now. But his love for Charles Birchfield had spread from the Birchfield Penny out to West Seneca. And he even wanted to go see where Birchfield lived. And I was, you know, that has stayed with me ever since that guy came. And just gave me that ten dollars. And I'm thinking... Yeah! Yeah. And I went to the office, and I said, a guy just gave me ten bucks, what do I do with this? And they said, Sharon has an envelope that she got in the office, and you just gotta put it, it's kind of like you hide it behind a door or something. So, give it to me. So I gave it to Paula, and I don't know what you did with Paula.
I went out for coffee.
Yeah. So that's what I wanted to say, though, is, and you said, people come from out of town all the time. And I don't know what else to say about that. I mean, that's a phenomenal thing that they wanna see. Because obviously, we don't have any original Birchfield art at the building. You know, you gotta go to the Penny to see that stuff, or the Albright Knox. But I think just the fact that the community cares enough about this famous artist and art, you know, who lived his last forty years of his life in our town, that has to mean a real lot. So thank you to all you volunteers who don't get paid for this.
And the Birchfield Nature and Art Park was written up and one of the top ten parks here in Western New York.
If you go to some of the travel sites on the internet and you look at what to do in West Seneca, this is one of the few things that they named, is the Birchfield Nature and Art Center. And if I can relate a story related to what Carol said. About five years ago, two couples... About five years ago, two couples came into the park. One of the gentlemen was disabled. And they walked around the park, and they came back into the building, and they were chatting with one of our volunteers. And it turned out that they were shirt-tail relatives of Charles Birchfield. But they had never known about him till they had gotten on the internet and looked it up. So they had, they were from South Carolina, had come to Western New York to find out more about this shirt-tail relative that was an artist. They were so impressed, they didn't wanna go to Birchfield Penny. They were so impressed with our park that they gave us an extremely generous donation of $5,000 right then and there. And again, not going to any other place. We have within the park, if you've never been to the park itself, placards throughout the park that show the work of Charles Birchfield. We were in the process of designing an area within the gallery that would show more about Charles Birchfield. And nobody's mentioned it, and I should have. In addition to Charles Birchfield and the Native Americans, that is also the site of our founding fathers, the Ebenezers. That area, School Street across the street, was one of the first incorporated villages in West Seneca. The area that is now the Birchfield Nature and Art Center, the park, there's a cemetery within the park in which there are approximately 120 Ebenezers buried. We know that because there's still a society in Amana, Iowa, called the Amanas, who were the original Ebenezers, and they came and dedicated that cemetery. So we have so much history, as well as the art and the other good things that go on. People, you don't wanna lose it. We've gotta keep it.
Let's see, Al, come on up. Come on up, Gray, now.
I don't need that microphone. I think everybody here, the reason that you're here is... Oh, yes, you can. The reason that we're all here is because somewhere along the line, we've been touched by the Birchfield, all right? Or we don't want our taxes raised. That's probably the other reason why the percentage is here. Understandable, okay? The only thing I can say is, at this point, and this is really, this question is for John more than the rest of the board. Paula, you did an awesome job, by the way. You touched a lot, a lot of things that you and I have talked about. You know what I mean? She did a great job. The thing that's important here is, because this thing is still in the litigation, all right? Is the town allowed to go forward with other things like grant writing and try to take in secure funds to get the repairs done?
There is no grant funding available. I, as soon as it happened, I checked for grant funding for that. I actually checked way before this happened, when we were building the comfort station.
Right.
Because it's so difficult for people to get in there. And we wanted to do a couple of changes, remember, Paul? Because it was difficult for people, so there is no grant funding.
Are we gonna be alone on this thing, don't you think? We're gonna be alone on the restoration on this, pretty much? Is that what you see so far? John?
Well, with, I wouldn't speak to any sort of the funding from insurance or from...
Got it, go ahead.
Exactly.
I got it.
But, you know, there's certainly nothing in, we've conferred with council. They've certainly said, opposing counsel and our clients have had an ample opportunity to inspect the building, get their experts in there. We even had a meeting with them in there. These folks saw it. So there can be movement. There is no restriction due to the litigation to move forward with anything.
We just got that information.
Got it. Well, with this, you know, with this public forum tonight, or hopefully it'll create more exposure. How about contractors? Is there any contractors here in this room tonight? There is, yes. Very good. And, go ahead, sir. Come on up and speak, please.
I'll give him his two hours. Thanks a lot.
Yes, and I just wanna offer this...
Yes, and I, I just want to offer this. Bill Bauer, when this happened, he was, he was right on site, just like when Lexington went under, Bill Bauer was right there. You are a very good man, Mr. Bauer, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kern.
Back in January 17, I got a request from the supervisor to take a look at the building with him, when they found that they had some issues and some problems. I met with Clark Passion and the engineers also, and back then, in January 17, we were able to put together a cost estimate, just to repair the building, just to repair the foundation work. And that's what our company ended up doing. The town has a copy of it, Clark Passion has a copy of the cost analysis for that, I have a copy here that I could also leave with, with John. And in addition to that, I know that was about two years ago, I'd like to volunteer that, if I could, if I could, I'd like to spend some time with the town to help put together another cost estimate for that.
Thank you, that's, that's terrific. Great opportunity for us. It would be great to get this up and running by June. Wouldn't it? I know, John, I know, I can feel you looking at it. See 20 feet in front of me, but I can feel it.
We're going on regardless, we've got a whole list of activities.
The park will always be there, the creek will always be there, people will use the trails, people will use their park, I used it when I was a kid. People would use the park without a building. Put together a plan.
That's, that's what we're going to do, that's what we're going to do. But I will, I will offer this, the building is used, the classroom is wide open. Our former supervisor, Joan Lewis.
Pull that microphone down, Joan.
Okay. Well, I want to thank the Birchfield people, the volunteers, for the work that they do. But I don't think the town board can make a decision yet.
No.
I mean, you can't, because you don't have the proper information yet. And I think that it's nice to hear all the people tonight, but I think that you'll have to give a public hearing further to decide what you're gonna do. I know I've gotten a lot of calls about the building, and some people want it, some people don't, a million and a half dollars is a lot of money for to restore it, but I don't know, so I think you have a tough decision to make, and I wouldn't want to be an issue to make.
I, I don't disagree with you, and I think the opportunity that we have right now, if we can gather all the information, all the resources that we have, and if we're given the go-ahead, you know, I know we can't do an RFP right now because of where we are in litigation, but...
I mean, you talked about it in litigation anyway.
We can, we're not talking about it, because it's in litigation.
We're talking, we've opened our kimono so far, we had to make the report public, we've already sued it out, there's no real anything to hide, that's what's difficult with respect to litigation when you're a public body, isn't it? Yeah.
So I mean, I don't think you can make a decision until the litigation is, is ended, right?
The board could move forward with remedial work to the building, everybody's had an opportunity to go through and check that out. It's not like a crime scene at this point, where we're restricted, or expulsion notices, or anything like that.
What is the cost of the remedial?
The forensic architect report had it at north of $900,000, and that would remedy the design defects, the construction defects, issues with lack of ADA compliance in specific parts of the building, and remedy some of the construction defects as well, that have contributed to the thermal and the moisture issues as well.
But you would have to do further work then, right?
That's something that the forensic architect, and kind of what I was touching on in my earlier comments with Mr. Kim, that once you start pulling it apart, if you work on remediating it, other problems will become apparent, and then there's also issues with staging the construction itself. One of the issues that he pointed out was the complexity of dealing with the roof. You'd have to open it up in parts, and then the weather can hit, and you'll have to have a site, or a contractor on site to take care of the roof, to tarp it back up, while you have somebody working on the HVAC units that are upstairs. It's, the remedial, one, one thing leads to another.
So would you want to do that?
That's why we're here.
Couldn't we just skip the HVAC units? Leave them up there? The roof is secondary, according to his report, do the primary remedial work and get in the building?
You're exactly right, and that's exactly the conversation that was intended to have tonight.
Okay, I just didn't want to get off of that potential...
Yeah, I'm just speaking to the facts that were set forth in the report, not any sort of recommended action.
And I'd also like to speak to Senator Galloway, so, representative later on, because I think there is, there's some kind of program, state program, that has like $65 million available every year for...
Parks and Recreation.
Some kind of development that helps the community, and this is such a help to the community. I mean, it brings people in for jobs, it, it brings in businesses, it's, it's just great all the way around, so I want to talk to you later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi, my name is Cindy Gash, I moved to West Seneca eight months ago, and I live on School Street, so I was very excited to live close to the Birchfield Nature and Art Center, is one of the reasons why I like the neighborhood. And so I'd like to encourage, you know, any work that can be done there. I also professionally am a grant writer, and I know that there are grants available for this. I'd be happy to advise and help with it. Wonderful.
You have a grant writer, and we are involved in there for this damage, and there's no grant for that?
I probably don't want to think about it as damage, you want to think about it as where you want the organization.
You speak laws, please?
I think you want to think about it as opportunities, not as damage, and so if you think about opportunities to serve the community, I do believe that you can find funding sources, you know, it may not be traditional government funding sources that a town would go to, but the organization may be able to go to, to fund based on it.
That's correct, because they're different.
Yep.
And they would love to have a grant writer, right, ladies?
Yes, and I know Cindy, so...
Very nice, well, thank you, Cindy.
We're open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 11:00.
Thank you so much for that generous offer.
Hello, my name's Joseph Justarowski, I call myself a volunteer artist, and I take care of the grounds over there on the hill. I trim, I trim the trees, I make sure the paths are all safe along the boardwalk, and I take care of everything along the creek, and I rake when things need to be raked, if there's broken trees, I pick up and make it safe for people to walk through. And my mother was a worker for West Seneca School System, as a custodian for, I don't know, about seven or eight years. And I'm a volunteer artist, I got some, some artwork, it's up at the Birchfield, or at the Birchfield Center. There's also some here at the library, if anyone wants to see some of my artwork.
Thank you.
And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Joan.
Thank you for all your input. Is there anyone further?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. My name's Cliff Orchard, my wife was Marge Orchard, who was the elementary principal at Allendale for 20 years. And I'm a West Seneca and Gardenville citizen, North American. I was born there, about two miles from where the Birchfield Nature and Art Center, and I went to Gardenville Elementary School, which is, used to be on Union Road. And when I, this is a very personal statement, I don't have any facts or figures, these people have done a wonderful job. But when I was in fifth grade, which was in the 1800s, I think... My teacher decided to have an assembly program about Charles Birchfield, and we all said, "Who's Charles Birchfield?" And we found out who he was. And I was extremely lucky, I guess I was the kid who wore a clean shirt that day, but I got to go to Charles Birchfield's house, and meet him, and have him talk to me, and this was the first adult that ever talked to me about art in my life, about his paintings. And I, it changed my life. I became a photographer because of Charles Birchfield, and we need to have his art, where he painted it, not just, he didn't just live in Gardenville. He painted what he saw from his house, and that's the park, the Birchfield Nature and Art Center's park. The wildflowers, you can see in every piece of his artwork, so... He changed my life, I would love to be involved with people, help change the record of history. Thank you.
Your wife was a beautiful woman. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rich, I live down close, near the center of the center, no pretend. And a question, lots of comment, okay? My background is engineering, retired engineer. And here and now, you deal with and stuff like that, my question is this, my background, we built $40 million gas plants, okay? And when you design a gas plant, I design it, hand it over to you, review, you hand it over to somebody else to review, before construction, before any RFPs or RFPs are set up. My question is this, was that done? I mean, you had a design firm build a building, comments that I heard was that it was supposed to be commercial, that they designed it residential? And now, where we, in some way shape or form, we have to pay for it. So has that process been revised for any future construction within the town, so we don't have to face this again? Because I would really hate this building, flat roof down the road, walls are buckling.
Then I can, I can talk to it in the context of, I looked at the project file for the Birchfield construction, and kind of saw what happened, and spoke with council, and spoke with the forensic architect. I started here as town attorney in 2015, watching the process of this building as compared to what I saw with the Birchfield, are, were two totally different worlds. And I feel very comfortable saying that.
Okay, with this building, but was the design of the Birchfield reviewed in such a way? Because I heard a comment, pressure-treated wood, soil, for a deck, a building, I mean, wasn't that reviewed to, hey, we can't, we can't do this? Yeah, but also, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have, if anyone wants any of these reports that were generated...
They're online too.
Yes?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, just, there's a bunch here. Hey, Joan? You're good, just bring it right there.
Okay, can everybody hear me in the back? Because I know we've been having mega problems hearing people. Can everybody hear me? Okay, great. This is a public forum to decide some issues on Birchfield, correct?
Correct.
Okay. How many here have never been into the Birchfield building? Okay? So that leads me to believe that everybody here is, wants to continue to save the building, is that correct?
No.
No.
No? We haven't heard much from those that are in opposition, and the reasons why. I really feel that that should be addressed. Number one, is it because of the cost? Or is it because it's just too centered on the Arabs? I've not seen any of that addressed. I've been there numerous times, and my very favorite was Fire and Ice, if anybody was there for that. It was amazing, and there were people there from Niagara County to watch this, but that's neither here nor there. How many want to see Birchfield stay? How many would like to see Birchfield go?
It's not a question of yes and no. It's not a question of yes and no, we want the Birchfield, or we want it to melt. The bottom line is, as you get opening a door, you're gonna find out that there's mold in there, and it's gonna take mold remediation, the costs go up. And that's what we're afraid of. We're not afraid to keep the Birchfield, we love the Birchfield. It's not a question of that, it's a question of if the hole in my pocket is gonna get any larger, and the money's gonna drain, am I gonna eat dog food to keep the Birchfield? That's the whole thing.
Well, this is the whole thing that, I, my last question is, are we just worried about the cost of renovation? Is there another way that we can find to look for?
We have a library that's not done yet, let's complete this before we build something else.
Okay. What about the bond that was for the library?
We have bond issues, we have depleted our slush fund to a bare minimum, from what I understand, in the town coffers. How can we, as people voting on this, until we know the cost? If any of you have built a home or bought a home, maybe you wanted the Taj Mahal, but you had to settle for a simple rent because you only had X number of dollars. It's not that you didn't want it, we all want it, we just can't maybe afford it. That's the problem, we, that's the problem.
Thank you.
It's not that we don't want the Birchfield, and I can think of things too, that we can do, maybe to rectify some of the costs. We have Potter Road, where we have construction people. Can we have any of those kids do any of the construction so that they can learn? Or will that be against the lawsuit that's going, that is pending? We have too many of these unknowns. Can we volunteer to buy a pound of nails, rather than purchase them someplace else? Can we, because we do have a free program, can we ask that maybe we have to invest and have people donate money to hang their artwork there, to help to free the cost of bonds, and the cost of bonds? It's not that we don't want it, it's afraid, but we don't think we have the money to support it. You know, you're living in a community, if you look around, most of us that are here tonight are on limited incomes. And there's so much money is going out, going out, going out. We realize that we don't have enough. Can you afford to buy a steak? Maybe you have to eat bologna. I don't know, but I have to know before I go to the store, how much money I have in my pocket, so I know if I can afford to buy a steak or have to eat bologna. That's the cost, that's the whole thing in a nutshell, is we don't know the cost.
I'm very glad that you spoke up, because otherwise there'd be a lot more grunglings going on, and that's why I posed some of these questions. I mean, it's important, it really is. Everything, everything is going up, the cost of colleges, for, for those of us that have grandchildren and children yet, it's out of sight. And as you said, the majority of the people here are on fixed incomes. The majority of us are over the age of 60. So I don't know what the answer is either, but is there some way the public could be involved in the cost factor of it? You know, in the planning stages? Get... Get individuals that have already volunteered to help and see if there is some way to cut costs. I'm sure we have business management students and CEOs that would be very willing to get involved in some portion of this. Am I off base?
It's the meeting's topic.
Right, this is why I'm asking, you know? It just seems that there, there should be something there.
I'd like to respond a bit. We do have, as the gentleman back here mentioned, in-house professionals, the buildings and grounds people and a town engineer, who could take a look at it and maybe decide something. I mean, that would be a good first step, because you don't really know anything until you look into it and have some sort of plan. But the town board would first have to make some kind of commitment. And then there are, as someone else mentioned too, there are funds somewhere available, we just have to find them.
Did everybody hear this lady up here? She said that there are funds available somewhere around, and the town board would have to make some type of commitment. So, I don't know, I just think that this is kind of a really good start to air what we feel about Birchfield and which direction we want the town to go in, you know, for the future. I think that if we can get more people involved, we might all get your answers. That's all I have to say.
Very nice, thank you, John.
Thank you. Excuse me, I heard Paula say that there are funds available.
Excuse me, Beverly, do you want to come up to the microphone?
You bring the microphone back here.
No. I'm sorry, I really was just walking, I hurt my hip.
It's plugged in though, I can't move it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Beverly.
I'm, I'm just saying that Paula mentioned that there's money available, and I did see that some of the other communities did get grants given to them. But they had a plan for the future, as this young lady mentioned, that they had a plan to present to these people who grant, who funded the grants that were given to them so that they could proceed. I think we're at the fundamental start. We don't have a true plan in place, as far as construction is concerned, in order to approach anyone with these grants.
That's correct, Beverly. And the purpose of this meeting is to gather everyone's concerns, their comments, and this board has to put a business plan together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, I'm Joseph Reimers, and I'm lucky enough to be the president for all these ladies and Carl, and what an awesome group it is to work with. And like you say, we got to get a plan together, but you know what I heard in all these people talking up here, was inspiration. So how do you, how do you start? You got to start somewhere. So it's inspiring to see that. And Jackie Alguerella, who said we have to have a plan, I agree. You got to have a plan. You can't just go in there. When we were just starting out, 2010, my dad was in there before, he was in there from the inception, doing carving classes. And I kept it going, that's the legacy. And I want to keep that going. I don't necessarily want to have my taxes raised either, but you got to be inspired enough to go on and work at it. These ladies up here are incredible, all of them. Everybody that comes in that building to volunteer, whether it's, who are the young disabled people come in? And they pick up stuff in the park?
The dayhem.
The dayhem. There's, you wouldn't believe the stuff going on there. Eagle Scouts building trash containers and everything, it's so involved for the community. The, and even just, people can come in, get a menu, on the back of the thing is a menu, you can call for picnic lunch, they'll deliver right there, there's, there's everything you can do in there. Picnics and playgrounds. It's Buffalo Street voted the playground, the nicest playground in western New York, right? So maybe there are pets. Yeah, right. You walk your dogs there.
And the Pokemon people. We get 200 of those.
But that's all I want to say, is just the inspiration, keep it going and get it going.
Is there anyone further?
Yes, I would like to say something, Jean.
Yes, oh, yes. Hello, good evening.
My name is Richard Macy. I was a contractor, building homes and commercial buildings, worked a few years until I retired. That's eighteen years ago. I'm getting up in years now and I got a few problems. But as I have seen many times, you're right, you have to start with a plan. You won't get a plan until you get into that building, see what the damage is inside. Once you pull off some drywall, so you have to put in new insulation. The outside foundation definitely has to be done. The whole building can be braced up. I've raised homes, built cellars in them, and things like that. You can do things, but you have to have people with experience to do this, and people who know what's going on. I couldn't believe some of the things I heard about being done in the town of West Seneca, which we have had building inspectors. At one time I worked part-time after I retired from the town. And how this got passed, and the contractors who built this building, and had the nerve pour concrete up against wood studs, is unbelievable. Where the inspectors were, no matter who they were, a clerk of the works, or someone paid by the town to inspect, it wasn't watched. And that's what we have to have, I believe we had a clerk of the works or an inspection team on this building. That's what you have to have. But first of all, going back, when you get a flood, all the floods that have down south, what do they do? They get in there right away, they tear the drywall off to prevent it further rot and mold, tear out the insulation and rebuild it that way. But they've got a foundation. So what we have to do is get inside the building, open it up on walls that are sagging, where we have problems. Make sure we know what we're doing for a foundation. Maestry has to be below grade, no wood below grade, definitely, anybody knows that. Do it this way, you can tear out all the insulation of the link, even if you have to re-drywall a good part, you can pay for all this. You can get an estimate for it. You know how many square feet are on the wall, how many square feet the ceiling, how many square, a square feet of flooring. It's basic, getting in there, doing something to get started and seeing what you have to work. You can talk all you want, but you get in there and open it up, whether it's an insurance claim or not, it's going to keep on going, you won't worry. So that's what I suggest you do. And I'd be happy to help out, I can't do a lot anymore, but I'd be happy to help out.
Thank you. I think it's important to know that we just got the okay about six weeks ago, that we were able to move forward with this conversation, publicly discuss the things that we would like to see happen there. So bringing all those concerned with this project together, getting their thoughts, and the important part is, yes, there is so much enthusiasm here to bring it back to what it should be, that's where we're going to move on. And now Mr. Bauer, we're going to use him, we're going to have that opportunity, you too, Rich, absolutely, our town engineer, get a plan together. Even if, worst case scenario, even if we can only salvage the gallery and the conference room, and have to say goodbye to the other half, so be it. I, I know, I don't want to see it either, but I'm, I'm saying that we use that conference room so much, we use that gallery so much, the classroom is so important, though, you know, and saving the lavatories.
Talk to us before you do it, because we have some ideas for all the other space too. And it involves the whole community and a lot more.
And Paula, you know, that was our hope, to give that to you, so you could have a pottery room and a, and a room for photography, you know that was our, our hope.
A Birchfield room, an Ebenezer Seneca room.
I don't disagree, so these are all the thoughts. You're absolutely right, Paula. These are our thoughts, there's nothing in concrete, but I think this is the first opportunity for us to get this information together and then move forward. But this has to be constant, we can't just say, well, we talked about it and it was okay. We have to do something. We have to move forward.
Sounds to me like you better made a good mind to move forward with it.
Move forward with putting a business plan together to see what the objectives are, the pros, the cons, and whether or not we're going to go forward funding it.
So next up, if the business plan is a vote, or what?
No, we're going to have another public hearing discussion and have the public, we'll put out the plan and the public can look at it and, again, add more ideas, more concerns, thoughts. I mean, just having this conversation, look at all, all the people that came forward with their talents, and I'm willing to share those, reducing the cost right from the get-go.
Do you have a cost when you put it out to a referendum?
The question was, if there is a cost, will it be put up to a referendum? There's very specific rules with respect to what can be put up for a referendum. We would have to see whether, how, how that would be approached at that time. I wouldn't put the board in a position where they would have to take a guess right now how that would be approached.
There's a lot of people concerned that it's going to be planned like the library. We are going to have a vote, right? Not like the library. We didn't get a vote on the library, we would like a vote on this. You're not going to pull that on us, are you? I don't hear nothing.
I'm not going to dignify it.
I'm not going to dignify it, taxpayers are paying for it.
How many times did you go to the library?
How many what?
How often did you go to the library?
I don't.
All right, why not?
Why not? Because I don't want to. How many times did you have your first aid calls?
I'm a, I'm a retired public librarian.
I'm a retired gas company guy.
I did not work in West Seneca.
Then you shouldn't be saying anything, because we're paying the bills.
Well, I live here.
Well, I think you should say something.
I was, I've been really upset about all this deal going on with the library. I'll admit, I did not use the West Seneca library a lot because it was a lousy building. I went other places. I now use this library.
My point is, we didn't get a chance to vote on this library, and it went from six million to ten million to fourteen million, then they wanted five million dollars more.
That's not.
We didn't have a choice on that, and now we're paying for it. How many times do you think this town's going to afford to put in a library?
You walk in that library, see how many people are in there. How many people are using the computers?
I have, I spotted, spot copy too.
My daughter came just to study in one of these study rooms, and the library closed at five o'clock on, whatever day it was, she wasn't even there to use it. It closes at eight o'clock, and the college kids can't come in here and use it to do their study.
We are bidding off, off it.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, the Birchfield, a lot of people in the town don't go there. Okay? Because you're not ours, you're not interested.
The taxpayer.
But you pay the taxes.
And you don't want them to go out and clean it up, right?
Okay, well, thank you.
I'm not complaining about school taxes, I'm not complaining about the ice cream, I don't complain about school evil, I don't use any of those services. I don't care, they're good for everyone else who's in the community.
We did get up to something, all I'm asking for, as a resident, do we get the vote on it? If anyone wants to answer it, okay?
No, the answer to that question is, if the question is properly presented, it could be put forth to a referendum.
How's this for a, to your right? How much is it going to cost me?
That can't be put to a referendum. That's why I'm saying the question has to be specifically asked in a manner which could be put to a referendum to answer the question. To ask a nebulous question as to whether it can be put to a referendum is a waste of time.
A waste of time? I'd rather say got no say on how you spend our money.
Okay, is there anyone further?
Yes, I, I guess the point we're at right now is that we do need to address a specific plan on the potential cost of, and identify all the repairs that are necessary. I think you need to actually start the engineering on that, and that's what I think we should do at this point. We can't, I don't see how we can go forward without knowing what, what we're facing, what the cost will be. I mean, and then look at the different options. I mean, the three options are, of course, repair, the second option is tear it down and rebuild it the right way, and of course, the third option is just to remove the building. But what we need right now is, we need a specific plan that gives us, maybe we have to get to the point where we actually have blueprints and show what the total cost actually is going to be. And I think once you have that, then we can address the issue of a public referendum on it. I think we can't do a public referendum, referendum until we have an actual estimated cost and a bond proposal. That's if we want to bond it.
That's, that's correct. That's correct, Jean. Bill, do you have something?
I'd like to ask maybe Emily Melzke, our chief of staff, to put something online and ask for volunteers. Anybody interested in volunteering, maybe put your name on there, like Mr. Bauer, he's the first contractor to step up every time somebody needs help in his town, he's here. But he's, but he's a professional. So I'd like to see if Emily Melzke can put something online, let us volunteer, anybody that wants to volunteer, give some, give some back as far as what you do and see, and see who wants to help. I, I think we all want to see the Birchfield go forward, we all do. We understand it's going to be expensive, or it might not be expensive, depending on who steps up to help. So if we could do that, let's do that for the first step, and we'll have another meeting.
Like specific?
Thank you, Bill.
Like towards the building, like not volunteers for the Birchfield group, but for the building? Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yes, Ed Lyle, I'm from New Lane. You mentioned that we're going back into another lawsuit. Why don't we just wait until the lawsuit, see if we're going to get any money from that, before we discuss, talk in anything? The two figures I've heard are nine hundred thousand to 1.7 million dollars. That's a significant chunk, chunk of change. I mean, I've lived here in 25, 30 years, and I've got to admit, taxes are high here, and you don't mind paying it for the services, but you don't mind, what you do mind is paying it over and over again. And that's what we'll be doing with this, if we don't wait until we hear from the lawsuit. If we do the lawsuit, then a lot of that money can be put towards this, will alleviate a lot of the problems here. But throwing out figures from nine hundred thousand to 1.7 million, the people in this area that have paid quite a bit of taxes, I'll admit it, is, is a lot to ask of us right now. So I think we just need to wait, stabilize the building, wait for the lawsuit to get settled, and then take it from there.
I have a friend, low respected and illegal, and he just told me about forty-five, about an hour ago, he said, get everything, you know, get things repaired, just make sure you repair what needs to be repaired and spend, you know, minimal cost, or however it works out, so that we can get the building up and running again.
We've secured the building? We've secured the building?
Yes.
I can say for public safety, but the lawsuit could take years. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tina, do you have anything for us?
Not at this time.
Jean, do you have anything further?
No.
Karen, do you have anything from Senator Beldner's office?
No, not yet. Okay, good.
Bill Hanley?
I was going to ask about scheduling next meeting, but I think we should wait till we see the volunteer list.
Okay. Well, we're going to get some more data, sitting with Mr. Bauer and getting some assessment as to where we can go to, so, and then putting those people together to see how we can coordinate something and get a business plan. Tom Clerk, do you have anything for us? But thank you for being here, Jackie, it's very important to take these minutes. And Counselor, do you have anything for us?
It was nice to see everyone again.
Good to see you too, Jen.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Drive safe, have a good night. I appreciate your input.